Our next departments are Commerce and OEO, please. If I could ask those that are leaving to please do it quietly so we can perceive what our hearing, please. Okay, thank you. You know what? You want to, you have something, he'll do it. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Epps, why don't you please identify yourself and perceive. We have your written testimony. I think you know how this works. And then, uh...
I'm trying to get the hang of it.
Yeah, right. Then we'll have questions. Again, if I could ask everybody, please leave quietly. Thank you. Please, Mr. Epps.
Good afternoon. Acting President Greenlee.
I'll take that. I'll accept that.
And members of City Council, I am Harold T. Epps, Director of Commerce. Sitting with me today are my Chief of Staff, Sylvie Gally-Howard, and Iola Harper, Deputy Commerce Director for Economic Opportunity. Also here today are other Deputy Directors and Members of Commerce Team. And Councilman Greenlee, I promise you I will not be reading the long version.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have submitted more lengthy testimony in writing and will provide a brief summary at this time. Just over 16 months have passed since I stepped into this role, and although you will always hear me saying that I want to see more progress at a faster pace, I am exceptionally proud of what has accomplished, what we have accomplished to date. I am also very proud of the fact that our team at Commerce, including senior staff, is very diverse and reflective of Philadelphia's demographics. Commerce is committed to transparency and accountability, which is why, in addition to being in the first cohort of performance-based budgeting, we have also just completed Commerce's first annual Commerce by the Numbers Report, which we just distributed, which lays out many quantifiable outcomes of our work. You should have also received a copy today, but I'll share briefly some of the highlights. With an overall budget of approximately $14.5 million, we have had the following outcomes in 2016. 5,518 businesses supported, 1,500 new jobs and 2,500 jobs retained through our business development initiatives, 255 commercial corridor businesses, business improvement grants such as storefront improvement program, cameras, and in-store totaling $2.1 million. 48,400 individuals supported with college and career readiness programming, 374 loans provided to small businesses totaling $26.8 million, a 30.6 percent MWD-SBE participation rate, that is inclusive of city quasi and federal spending in 2016, and $318 million awarded in MWD-SB contracts, same inclusive of city quasi-federal spending for 2016. And in addition, our existing portfolio of programs, we have some ambitious goals planned for fiscal year '18 and beyond, which include, very quickly, Fair Chance Hiring Program, a one-year $500,000 pilot grant initiative, which aims to provide 100 jobs for returning citizens into fiscal '18. If the pilot is successful, the administration hopes to build on its strengths in order to develop a more attractive permanent alternative to the sorely underutilized PREP tax credit program. Gateway Philly, a rental rebate for businesses looking to bring an office of at least 20 jobs to a Philadelphia office space. Through this initiative, over the course of fiscal '18, we hope to bring 20 new companies and a total of 500 new jobs to the city. Another program, more equitable utilizing, more equitable utilization of commercial quarter programs. Despite our best efforts, we have found that many of the businesses that most need our programs, primarily minority-owned and located in low-to-modern-income quarters, face obstacles to assessing city and nonprofit services. To address this issue, Commerce will pilot one-on-one coaching through the Biz Coaching Initiative. The capital consortium will also be critical to these businesses having better access to capital. Immigrant Business Strategy, recognizing that immigrants are a critical economic driver for our neighborhood commercial quarters. Commerce has drafted an immigrant business strategy, which includes more intentional bilingual services such as our new Global Business Hours, and several events such as Immigrant Business Week and Passport Philadelphia. Increased Philadelphia's prominence as a hub for startups and tech. Through the efforts of Startup PHL, including the mayor's recent participation in South by Southwest, Philadelphia has gained important recognition for its startup and tech scene. Startup PHL recently announced $130,000 in awards to support Philadelphia's entrepreneurial ecosystem, and will carry out two more such call-for-ideas in fiscal '18. City Council Special Committee on Regulatory Reform, Commerce will prioritize its leadership role in this committee. Reducing bureaucracy and burdens for businesses helps to encourage economic growth and innovation, and ultimately leads to more jobs for our residents. Work towards the city 35 percent participation goal through a combination of increased capacity building for MWD-SBs, enhanced monitoring, and more coordination across third-party certified agencies. OEO aims to create the conditions to meet the 35 percent goal in short order. And finally, Commerce is committed to driving economic development and revitalization, furthering job creation throughout the city, from our central businesses, district, to all of our neighborhoods, and I do want to stress, all of our neighborhoods. Economic development is a long-term process with many parts and important partnerships, but Philadelphia has made tremendous progress in the last two decades, and you can be certain that we will do all that we can to build upon and accelerate this growth. That is the written report. And Mr. Greenlee, Councilman Greenlee, I'm open for questions for me and my team.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let me just ask, in the budget detail, it shows a $6.4 million increase in your funding from the hotel tax. Then it says tax has been moved to a contribution to other government agencies. Can you explain that a little bit, what that means, how that money is spent? Anybody?
I will let my CFO respond to that question.
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Sure. Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
My name is Edward Garcia. I'm the Deputy Director...
A little closer microphone, if you could.
Sure. My name is Edward Garcia, Councilman. I'm the Deputy Director for Finance Administration here at Commerce. So that contribution goes split between the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Visit Philly, and the Convention Center, sorry.
Okay.
Big one. So that's according to the legislation.
So that other government agents, that's what that means?
Yeah.
Those three, it's divided that way?
Exactly.
And let me stress, none of that dollars remain in Commerce.
Right.
Not one.
We noticed, we noticed that, yes.
We're not, yeah.
That's where I was going.
Yes. It's an in and an out.
You don't get any of that, right?
No, we don't get it.
You get to see it as it's flowing through.
It's a pass through.
And that's according to the legislation. We can, we have to pass through 100 percent.
Okay, and I remember that that was talked about, yeah. Just a question on commercial corridors. Again, budget detail talks about plans to support, of supporting 30 commercial corridors. What the, can you explain what support, you know, when you say supported, what does that mean?
Well, you know, there are many programs that have been in Commerce for years around meeting the basic premises of safe, clean, and well-lit. So we have street cleaning programs, quarter management programs, in-store, and storefront improvement programs, all being utilized to drive our economic development activities into our neighborhoods.
So it's kind of all the aboves?
It's all the above, yes.
Gotcha. All right, I see that.
But let me just stress one more time, that after doing 30 neighborhood visits last year, all of our quarters need as much resource as we can provide to support their ongoing revitalization. And again, the four programs that we do that with are storefront, in-store, street cleaning, and quarter management.
And those 30 are...
And camera management program.
Okay, right. All right, I got you. All right, the list is growing here, so let's start with Councilwoman Parker.
Well, at least we know we're loved.
Pardon me?
We were concerned nobody would show up, so we're happy to see fellow councilmen.
Most aren't concerned about that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to each of you. Director Epps, I want to just start with saying a huge thank you, and when you've been staff, you know what it's like, the people who are on the ground actually getting the work done. I want to say to Nazara Sabri, Gianna Lawrence, Jahai Lee, Yvonne Boy, and Karen Fegley, thank you for not blocking my telephone number in your cell phones. Sylvie, always responsive, and Iola, tough job, but you've handled it, you know, with grace, I appreciate that. And to Dwayne Baum, who's the institutional knowledge guy, who I call and say, "What happened 20 years ago?" He seems to always remember. And Dawn Somerville is going to, Councilman Dom, you'll be happy, anything that's tech, she's always trying to move my mind in the tech direction. And so I would just want to thank you for serving in an educational role for me as a councilperson about ways that we can enhance economic development in the city of Philadelphia. With that being said, I want to go back to where Councilman Greenlee left off, and that was back to commercial quarters. How many commercial quarters do we have in the city of Philadelphia?
Karen.
Karen Fegley, Deputy Commerce Director. So this is a frequent question, and there's not a straightforward answer, but I'll try to give you one. We actually, the Planning Commission, you know, in their surveys of the city, they identify almost 300 commercial corridors in the city. That's a big number. That includes every sort of commercial node. When we talk about commercial corridors here, we're usually talking about neighborhood, pedestrian, transit-oriented corridors that have a certain level of density within a few blocks. So of those, the Commerce Department targets about 80 corridors, citywide, that we try to support through all of the funding programs that Harold mentioned. Of those, I would say we have, we fund corridor managers on about 15 corridors.
15 corridors.
And then some of them, additional corridors, they have, they're able to have that type of position, a corridor manager, through either a business improvement district, using the CDC Tax Credit Program, or other funding that, you know, that nonprofits or CDCs or business associations are able to get.
Great. I appreciate that. And so when you just, the way you described the commercial corridor, transit-oriented, high level of density, those are the quarters that I'm referencing.
Right, that's what we're talking about, yep.
So 80 quarters, and you said about 15 have managers that are funded through?
Through the Commerce, yeah, Targeted Corridor Management Program. So we'd...
I won't ask for you to give me this information on the record, but if you can, give us a list of the quarters that are funded via community development block grant funding. Out of those 80, how many are funded via CDBG funding? And I ask this because I was happy to hear you mention that some quarters hire managers because they are savvy enough or have the technical structure in place to have a bid organized and some sort of special services district. But with this concept of what we've been hearing called middle neighborhoods in mind, you know, these neighborhoods that are not wealthy, the people make a nickel over the income eligibility guidelines to be funded through the community development block grant funding, that's a group that I'm very much interested in working with because they have sometimes been left out of the mix. Although Commerce has tried, you know, very creatively when you, when you could, I needed to, on a record note, that they don't always benefit from resources that are available. In addition to that, I want to go on the record as being highly supportive of that SIP program. It doesn't take a lot. I mean, if there was one place, Councilman Dom, where we wanted to maximize efficient use of scarce resources and see an immediate outcome, one only need to look at the storefront improvement program. With that being said, is, are there any plans to increase funding for this program over the five-year plan?
We haven't, we have not budgeted an increase for storefront improvement program next year with city funds. What we do intend to do is we're going to leverage with some DCD, we've applied to DCD. We have some, an existing grant from DCD through the Keystone Communities Program, and we've applied for more. And we intend to use that state money to sort of subsidize our storefront program for the corridors that need it most, the most low-income areas. What we find is it is a really successful program, as you've seen, and it's great because it provides immediate outcomes to not only the businesses that benefit, but the whole area, because they have this new attractive storefront. We're finding that the businesses in our most low-income corridors, and more often, minority and immigrant-owned businesses, are not taking advantage of the program at the rate we would like to see. And so that is one of our goals in the Commerce Department this year, is to increase participation from those areas, and we're hoping that subsidizing the money with state money will help.
Great. Well, I want to thank you for your response, and again, strong advocate, and I know I'm not alone. I've heard every district councilperson talk about the power and importance of that storefront improvement program.
And just add, that is one, with council support to make that program city-funded rather than CDBG-funded, that is probably the one program we are able to offer to all 80 of those targeted corridors, so citywide, yeah.
Thank you. My final question, Mr. Chairman, is regarding OEO. And with that being said, I was pleased to see in the testimony your comment that helping MW and DB businesses, those enterprises with certification and belonging to the registry, is not enough to ensure access to opportunity. So I appreciated you sort of just stating that on the record. And back in September, when I read that comment, it made me think about an article that was in the Philadelphia Business Journal, and it highlighted that the city's bidding process was about to go electronic, and that it could help more MWD-SBE firms. So my question is, with Contracts PHL, DocuSign, and Contracts Hub sort of gone, is the city tracking whether or not this is helping us? And with it being now electronic, and it's sort of becoming more transparent and easier, is it helping us along in the fight, or we're not seeing a difference? It's too new.
I think it's too new right now. I can definitely check with procurement to see if they've got some intermediary metrics that they're checking, but I can tell you that eContracts has helped tremendously with outreach because it automatically sends out information about opportunities in advance to our members in the registry and in their registry. So I think it's helpful from that perspective. And then from the documentation perspective, our vendors can now upload all of their information, where in the past, they may have had to create, you know, six volumes, gigantic volumes, and drop them off to be distributed. That still has to happen in some cases, but the DocuSign system is allowing uploading of documents, and it's allowing execution of documents much faster. So there are not papers sitting on a desk waiting for a signature, waiting for another signature, so on and so forth. So in terms of actual return on the change, I'm not sure at this point, and that's something I can check with procurement about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it would be interesting to see that data, to see whether or not the technology has encouraged more participation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to say, you guys are doing a good job, so we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
In that light, I have a few questions I wanted to ask. And recent, the recent legislation that we passed regarding evaluating the incentives and tax payments and so forth, and Koz's, and how much money has been allocated to do that analysis this year and over the next five years? Have we done any kind of allocation for that yet?
Good afternoon. My name's Sylvie Gally-Howard. I'm Chief of Staff. So we don't have, there is not sort of a funding allocation that came along with that legislation. However, we do have a little bit of money in Class 200, so we've actually put out an RFI to see, part of the RFI asks for people to provide what they think it would cost, so that we can then pursue, potentially pursue, funding outside of the city as well as use what we have.
So what do you think that number's going to be?
I really don't know, but I think it'll probably be a minimum of $125,000, and I feel like it could get as, to be as much as half a million, but I don't think we'll actually spend that much. We have heard from a number of parties that are interested in providing some in-kind support, so I think we'll probably have to cobble together, since there's multiple parts to that process.
And just to reiterate, the goal of that informational reporting is to determine our return on investment and how to make that program better for a higher return.
It's looking at all the different, it's looking at all our business attraction programs. It's about eight to 10 programs, looking at how those are doing, looking at what other cities are doing, and how we can be more competitive, exactly. And we're excited to see the results.
Well, I have another question for you. And then when you look through the budget, maybe it's just a designation, but there's a large number of individuals within the Commerce Department that have a job title of Director. And has the department ever reviewed its current organizational structure to ascertain the need for so many, I guess their managerial staff, as opposed to reallocating those funds to be used in the commercial quarters?
We actually just, we just recently looked at our organizational structure. We feel that the structure that we have in place is very necessary. We have about 70 staff onboard for a lot of different programs, and I don't think that any of those directors could be cut.
Okay. And the other thing...
They also say that, as it relates to the quarters, it's not the staffing, it's the resources that go into the programs that provide the ability to support the quarters, and the ability for us to reach has been of the constituents as we like to reach.
Okay. There's two points I want to make, just for you to keep in mind. I am concerned about the ability of us to continue to absorb retail space, not just in the city of Philadelphia, but in the country. We are over-retailed right now, basically.
I would agree.
And so you can look on Walnut Street, and we have six vacancies, and that's because of the internet. Everyone's buying on the internet. So my concern, my colleague, Councilwoman Parker's district, for example, there are stores there that are probably getting 10% less in business than they got seven or eight years ago because people are buying their products on the internet. And so realizing that struggling, stores may struggle a little, maybe less, maybe they may reduce a bit, the one area that's not reducing is restaurants and food. Because as I said at the Councilwoman Parker's press conference, you can't eat over the internet, okay? But so what are we doing in these commercial corridors to build up restaurants, coffee shops? Because those attract people who come to the locations, and then they do shop in the locations once they're eating. So I mean, if we're looking in the big picture, we should have a plan, like make sure, and I'm using Councilwoman Parker's district as an example, that there are certain restaurants there that'll attract people to come, give them a nightlife activity, even allow the stores to stay open later. But I think it's a bigger plan, because the number of stores we have now will not be the number we'll have in 10 years. It will be less.
Well, in addition, Councilman, my viewpoint of that is, you know, when the city had 2 million people, it was at full capacity, it's got 1.6 now, so just by default, we should be having about a 20% vacancy rate, and sure enough, we got about an 18%. It's, you know, and yeah, Walnut Street, South Street, Chestnut Street have way more vacancies than you would think your center should have. But when we get to the neighborhoods, one of the things that's consistent, every neighborhood wants a clean, safe, and well-lit. All right? So we must do those things to prepare a quarter for any kind of occupancy. It doesn't matter whether it's restaurant or anything else. But when it comes to getting a quarter ready, we've got to do in-store and storefront. We've got to do storefront first. But before you do that, you've got to clean the streets. And so this city's got a major, major, major challenge with trash, and we got to do that first, and we don't do nothing else.
I just want to make sure that Commerce Department and us, we're focused on the opportunity of restaurants, because one out of four leases last year in the city were restaurants, one out of four, which was never like that.
Well, and I agree with that. And one of the other things that we're beginning to see is that many, no, an increasing number of people are viewing the competitiveness of Philadelphia in a very attractive way, and we're seeing many more people get priced out of New York. And so they may not work here during the week, they may commute back to New York, but they live here, and what do they do on the weekends? They eat here. So absolutely, restaurants and all the other kind of services that they will need are a critical opportunity for our growth.
One last comment, though. If you can figure out, and I'm going to keep using Councilwoman Parker's district, if we could figure out something in her district that would be unique, that would cause people to want to go to that O'Gonst Avenue or Wadsworth that's unique and special in that district, that's what will make that district thrive. We've got to figure out what that is for each particular area of the city, but that'll cause people from all over the city and the suburbs to want to go to that neighborhood. So anyway, thank you.
We'll take any and all ideas we can get on that one.
Okay, I'm happy to help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Barris?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
I just had a couple of questions. And I, you know, I wanted to follow up on that line of questioning because just thinking about Councilman Dom's comments, and that one in four leases were restaurants in the city of Philadelphia. And one of the problems that we have, particularly in underserved neighborhoods, is that we don't have restaurants. You know, we have bulletproof takeout, we have stop-and-goes, we have pretty much everything except restaurants. And so, you know, my office has undertaken this study of the stop-and-goes in my district. I have more stop-and-goes than I have public schools, just to give you an idea. You can reach a stop-and-go in my district within, on average, three minutes anywhere within my district. And I go from the top of Chestnut Hill to Broad and Lehigh, and over to 24th Street, and over to Second and the Boulevard. And so that's a lot of real estate to cover and to have that many, you know, liquor establishments that say that they're restaurants. You know, they say that they are, you know, if you look at the banners or the awnings that say, you know, "Oh, we serve food, sandwiches, hoagies, cheesesteaks, chicken, this, that, the other thing," and you go inside and they sell beer, you know, and now shots of liquor. So we've undertaken a significant effort to try to figure out what can we do to actually bring more restaurants into the city of Philadelphia, and particularly in underserved neighborhoods, and how do we also, at the same time, address this constant bombardment of alcohol and alcohol consumption, which really comes across as predatory. And so just thinking about those things, I'm wondering if Commerce has given some thought to, you know, how we address that. And also, we've taken a tour. I don't believe we had anyone from Commerce with us when we went on our stop-and-go tour, but we took the Commissioner of Illinois and the Health Department Commissioner, and someone from the Liquor Control Board, and the Philadelphia Police Department, the Philadelphia Fire Department. And so as we went to these different locations, it was clear that, you know, 90% of these so-called restaurants don't have what is required as a restaurant license. So they don't have restrooms, which are available to patrons. They don't have appropriate seating. You know, they're supposed to have seating for 30 people. They don't have seating, you know? And I could just go on and on, but the bottom line is that they're, you know, essentially masquerading as restaurants. There's one in particular, I'll just call it out by name, but it, you know, if you drive by it, it says Hoagie City. And I remember when they used to serve hoagies at this particular location. You know, everybody remembers a Hoagie City if you're from Philadelphia. But, you know, I went, you know, as we were doing our tour, somebody said, "Oh, no, there's, that's a stop-and-go." And I said, "No, it's Hoagie City." And sure enough, over the years, it's no longer Hoagie City, it's now just basically a liquor establishment. So I'd like to get some sense in terms of Commerce's priority to deal with these kinds of issues, knowing that, you know, we want to make our commercial corridors stronger, better, we want to draw people to them, and if people are shopping over the internet, again, you know, if we know that there's food there, then that's an opportunity to draw people out, to get people to come and shop on our corridors. So does Commerce have a strategy for that, particularly in underserved neighborhoods?
Thanks, Councilwoman, and thanks for, you've been really taking the lead on this effort, which has been, is definitely something we are aware of and involved in. We hear about it from our corridor managers, from small businesses, from community members who, you know, are in the neighborhoods, what an issue it is with these businesses. I would say our strategy... I would say our strategy, I think we've talked here before about that we have a cross-functional Business Services Task Force that I run with Brian Abernathy, and sort of involves all the departments that regularly work with businesses to make sure we're improving, constantly improving our business customer service. A lot of the cross-departmental things that are coming up are enforcement-related and compliance-related, and so there is increasing coordination, I would say, between Commerce, LNI, Health, in some areas, we have 52nd and Market Street, we've started, we have the corridor manager is now staffing like an enforcement coordination committee, where monthly, all those agencies that deal with enforcement, the ones I just named, LNI, Health, three different police districts, Septa Police, Parking Authority, sometimes it takes all of those folks to get together and strategize, and the corridor manager can play the role sort of of good cop, if you will, to all of their bad cop roles. And I'm very anxious to work on sort of, get some creative solutions to, it sounds like we have to have a local solution to the stop-and-go and the liquor-by-the-drink problem. And I definitely want to work closely with the Health Department and LNI to make sure we come up with something that makes those businesses do the right thing, but also make sure that it doesn't hurt the businesses that are already doing the right thing, I don't want it to be new regulation that, you know, makes it harder to do good business, but we want to make sure everyone's following the rules.
And I think you were in our last meeting that we had, just to follow up on the nuisance business bill-
Nuisance business.
...which we passed last year, which, you know, I'm glad to say has started in the 8th District, and has, you know, it started in northwest Philadelphia, and has moved throughout the northwest and into the northeast, and it's sort of like a systematic rollout that the Police Department is doing to address nuisance businesses, many of the stop-and-gos fall under that category, so, but I, one of the things that I would like to add, and I'll come back around to my second round in a moment, but one of the things I'd like to add is that as you're doing this, what did you call it, a cross, cross something, 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 something?
It needs a better name, yeah. Cross-functional Business Services Task Force.
Okay.
It's just another set of meetings, but interdepartmental, yeah.
I'll just call you.
Yeah, just call me.
But what I was gonna say about the Cross-functional Business Services Task Force, is that, you know, as you are, you know, sitting down with these different agencies, whether it's Commerce, LNI, and the Health Department, it's so important to connect with the District Council Office-
Oh, absolutely.
-to see what kind of work, you know, we have in mind, have been working on, what kind of things we've been doing, because, you know, you know, I think it was great that our Commerce Director has been touring all of our commercial corridors, and we thank you, and thank the entire department for the work that you've been doing on those corridors, but we've been working so closely with many of the special services districts, and my district, as an example, we have, I think, a special services district almost for every single commercial corridor, so, you know, we just want to make sure that we're in sync with what you're doing, and vice versa, so we'd really like to work with you as we-
Yeah.
...come up with strategies to address those issues, and also the stop-and-go issues.
Absolutely, that's, we should, I will be more proactive in doing that, sometimes the solution will be legislative, and even when it's not, I know you're so invested, and it's been great working with you on the nuisance business law, and I think while that is an enforcement tool for, that really impacts the police, and LNI are the ones that carry it out, Commerce can play the role of getting the message out, and making sure it's in a language that businesses understand, and all that, so it's been great to work with you on that.
Oh, great, well, thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to Councilman Green, Councilman Jones, you have a point of information?
...information, and for the record, point of information can't be questions, have to be statements, or correct--
You're saying they can be?
No, they cannot.
They cannot be, that's correct, that's correct.
So I want to hold to the rules.
Thank you.
Love Commerce on corridor tours, love them on industrial tours, love them for Haverford Avenue and Main Street cameras, I have a meeting at 3F to go. All statements.
Okay.
Amen.
That was very good, that was very good, sir. I liked the way you snuck that in there. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you, Commerce Director Epps, and your staff, for all the work that you do in this regard, in trying to promote economic development in our city, from small businesses to large businesses, I just had some questions I wanted to talk about, earlier you heard me, in my conversation with Community College Philadelphia, talking about the power program, hopefully you'll be able to direct some of your staff to work with them, to provide more information regarding the capital consortium, and I will also make that same outreach to Nicole West, Run and Rebuild. Speaking of the capital consortium, when I look at page four of your testimony, of the budget detail, I'm sorry, I noticed that in the budget detail for Commerce, the funds for the capital consortium has been zeroed out, so I think Anna Adams is here, if she could come to the table, please?
I think she was hiding over there, Councilman.
Well, I know, and then the capital consortium was an initiative that Director Epps has, and is speaking about, I know that Mayor Kenny, both in his budget address to this chamber on March 2nd, as well as his presentation to the Chamber of Commerce, also made reference to, so I find it somewhat interesting and troubling that that dollar amount has been zeroed out, when the mayor has consistently spoken about the capital consortium as a needed investment and program in our city, as well as Commerce Director Epps.
Sorry, I missed the question, sorry, this is Anna Adams, the Budget Director.
On page four of the budget detail, the amount allocated, which is really not a large amount of dollars, considering the size of our city budget, the amount for the capital consortium has been zeroed out.
Yeah, I think we have taken it out of general fund funding, but I believe there may be some CDBG funding that is helping pick up the rest of that cost. In FY '18, we haven't included any general fund support for it, it was funded in FY ' '17, but we didn't continue that funding in FY '18.
But in CDBG dollars, although I disagree with how our, well now Department of Housing and Community Development have interpreted CDBG funding and making it more restrictive, but if they continue to follow that line of thinking, then the capital consortium dollars will have the same local restriction on how we use CDBG dollars, if we just use CDBG dollars for the capital consortium, so that would be a problem.
I understand. I don't know, I mean, we can, we can talk about that internally, we can try and figure out how, but for '18, I think we're okay with it funded in '18, but we can always talk about issues in future years if there's a risk of that funding going away.
So you're saying that the budget detail is not correct?
Well, it's correct in the fact that the general fund support is gone in FY '18.
Right.
Yes, so it's correct, it's showing it, so it shows the general fund, the loss of that general fund funding in FY '18.
Right, and so you're anticipating making up that with other general fund dollars?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilman, when, as you know, and we were really excited to launch the capital consortium, when we, when we launched that last year, we, it allowed us to reallocate some staff a little bit, and we actually made it a unit within our Neighborhood Business Services, which is our financial resources for businesses, so in addition to capital consortium, those folks are, it's, those folks, meaning, there's two people, two staff, who also manage our KIVA program, our in-store program, and are sort of our, just key people on identifying financial resources for businesses. So based on that, and kind of what Anna was getting to, is we've been able to cobble together other funding sources, a little bit of CDBG, a little bit of general funds, a little bit of leftover KIVA funds, to fund, continue to fund those two staff people. We don't have additional funds that would have built out the online tool any further than what we currently have, you know, that, which was something that could be in the works for the future. But to Anna's point, we have, the staffing for it is covered for this year, the capital consortium will continue.
Okay, but that was a decision made by, I guess, Finance Director and Budget Director in reference to not using general fund dollars for the capital consortium, and considering how we have historically used or made our own to turn a policy decisions on how CDBG dollars are used, that could possibly restrict the effectiveness of the program, so I think that's a conversation we will need to continue to have as we go through this budget process, in reference to my support for the budget.
Understood.
Okay. Moving forward, I want to get some perspective regarding OEO, I know, Ms. Harper, you've done a good job in reference to coming in OEO, and I know you're still in your initial phase, one of my questions, and this is really starting to look towards the next year, that in your department, I believe you have 13 employees, but you're budgeted for 14, is that correct, based on the budget detail?
14 budgeted total.
What I, yes, yes.
Right.
So one of my concerns is that, in reference to OEO, and I enjoyed the language in the budget testimony, I think Councilwoman Parker made reference to it, that we need to do more advocacy, and so from my perspective, advocacy is not just, and I'm gonna focus just on professional services, advocacy is, yes, we provide the ranges for specific RFPs, and procurement helps put together the RFP, but what role is OEO taking at the selection process of various departments? I think part of the problem, why we're not getting at the level of goals that we should be getting at, is that we don't have a role of OEO actually in the selection process of contracts, and various departments simply say, well, we're not able to find firms of color in this area, here's the ranges, we can't find any, so they move on. And so I think one of the things going forward, and we spent a lot of time on the certification back and forth, which regardless of the city certifies, or some other entity certifies, the real focus, from my observation, should be at the decision-making level in departments in reference to contracts, so that way we have someone from OEO involved in that process, so when a department says, well, we weren't able to find anyone, we have some additional information, because OEO was involved at the selection level, so I'm curious about your thoughts in that regard.
Absolutely, so, you're right, we've done a number of things to try to chip away at that, first of all, we've met with, or we are actually in the process of meeting with every single Commissioner, or the leadership team of every department, to talk about the fact that we'd like OEO to be more than a repository of numbers, we want to be a partner in outreach, we want to be a partner in advocacy, and we want to be at the table from the beginning, when and where possible, and so, so far, a number of departments have taken advantage of that, and so we've had a number of conversations pre-RFP level, to talk about, or pre-bid level, to talk about what the project is going to be, what their expectations are, we're able to talk about what our expectations are, so certainly my hope is that that trend will start to magnify and spread across various departments, so I think, you know, that's one thing. The second thing that we're doing is, we have fortified and lifted up our OEO officers' training, we've created a toolkit for all OEO officers, to really teach them how to look at opportunities in their department through our eyes, when we are not there. So on May 9th will be our first annual OEO officers' training, where they will receive a toolkit of everything that they need to understand about OEO, how to look at, how we look at things, and then helping them to look at contracts, helping them to look at RFPs, helping them to look at bids, understanding what the process is that we engage in, in terms of how we identify our participation ranges, so part of it is communication, a large part of this is communication, and that, you know, that's part of what we're doing so far, and I hope, you know, that answers at least part of your question.
Yes, thank you, I know you have not had a chance to get through all the various departments, that's why I've kind of given this your breathing room, but, and I, this is for Ms. Adams, so I'm assuming you're listening, that for next year's budget, I anticipate resources and a plan on how OEO will be involved at the procurement level, at the decision-making level-
Right.
...for when the city is looking at professional service contracts, because until we have OEO in the mix at decision-making level, and can really effectively say whether waivers should be granted or not, we are just talking through this process, not really advocating what we need to do.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, our additional questions in the next round.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Heaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, thank you for your testimony.
You too.
As you've heard from a lot of our colleagues, you know, we truly appreciate all that you do as a department for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia, and in trying to increase the volume of small businesses to large businesses, you know, especially when it comes to your portal, all right, and your business portal is a central location that is electronic, all right, and interactive, so we appreciate that. There's a lot that we can discuss here today, I'm gonna stick in my wheelhouse, and stick with manufacturing and business attraction, and then, you know, maybe in a second round, I'll go back to the commercial quarters, because, you know, everything plays into a vibrant community, right, and that's companion businesses, it's companion marketing, it's leveraging resources, and in my short time here, well, I'd say short time relative to, I guess, Council in the whole, but I saw, or have seen, the leveraging, better leveraging the resources, and you talk about intergovernmental cooperation with PIDC, Mayor's Office, Commerce, you know, everybody utilizing the tools that we have together for packages, all right, when it comes to businesses, you know, especially when it comes to Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So with that being said, manufacturing, have, you know, we, there has been a creation of an office of industry now in manufacturing, as opposed to manufacturing in industry, so we are industry-driven, which is awesome, and how have we progressed from last term to this term in our manufacturing? Do we have a better account on how many manufacturers we have here in the city of Philadelphia?
So my overarching statement for my time in Commerce is we're going in the right direction, and not fast enough, and I would say the same thing about our manufacturing and industry task force. Dwayne, you want to come help me out here? As you well know, last February, March, we assembled a group down at the Navy Yard to make some directional progress there, we've stumbled a little bit, and not made as much as I would have liked in this area, and so I'll defer to Dwayne, who's, we've had a couple of meetings to corral them, but again, I'm not satisfied with where we are.
Dwayne Bumm, Deputy Commerce Director, a big part of what we sort of focused on from last year going forward, I think, that was with Councilman Heaton and your assistance, was the outcome of the Mayor's Task Force on manufacturing, where, which listed, the biggest issue to, for, in manufacturing is the need to sort of have a qualified workforce that could fill the vacancies in manufacturing, get certifications for people in manufacturing, we've, what we've done in Commerce, and we do that sort of across all sectors, but in fact with heavy focus in manufacturing, has been to create a talent development unit that focuses very specifically on that, we've got staff looking specifically at manufacturing as a key area, and have been working with our partners, whether that be PIDC and the Governor's Action Team, but also training providers like Philadelphia Works and Community College, so, again, I think as the Director sort of said, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but as we sort of do continue our outreach to manufacturers, the issue that sort of comes up most frequently with them is, how do I get the right people to fill the jobs that we can be creating here, and so talent is paramount in that.
Let me go back and make a comment, and tie it back to those who in the room, when Community College was here, and that is, we cannot develop enough people fast enough to fill today and tomorrow's jobs in the manufacturing and industry components of our economy, and those of us who would be known as baby boomers, as we age out, we've got to be very proactive and aggressive to make sure that we've got Philadelphians ready to take our places in those jobs, and we are not developing them fast enough.
And, you know-
And we, I mean, I don't, I went to CCP's graduation on Saturday, they graduated 2,000 people, I wish it'd been 10,000, because we need as many as we can get, and in every category that Deputy Director talked about, we know where there are jobs that we can't fill right now.
Director, I am so glad that you publicly are saying it, because we've been talking about that for years, and, you know, we're developing a pipeline, you have staff dedicated to the pipeline, you have partnerships with the school district and Philadelphia Works, and several others, trying to develop a pipeline, an educated pipeline, you get the partnership with the Ben Franklin School, and, you know, we hear over and over and over again about rebuild, and about how many jobs that rebuild is going to create. It's pale in comparison-
That is correct.
...to the amount of- To the amount of immediate jobs that Philadelphia kids, Philadelphia adults, Philadelphia yens, period, in all neighborhoods of the City of Philadelphia, all right, have the opportunity to go to work right now.
Right now.
Right now, and it has been since 2007, all right, from what I understand, especially when it comes, in Pittsburgh and in Philadelphia, you know, there has been such a high demand for people who want to work in advanced manufacturing, who want to work in your traditional manufacturing sense, and welding, and we have the shipbuilding, we have welders to help support some of our businesses. So, you know, whatever we can do to tie into the mayor and his initiative to create jobs and try to pull people out of poverty and provide opportunities with this body, Council President talks about it all the time, you know, we're, look, we're fighting for scraps, right, on a big project, all right, where we could be putting people to work immediately, all right, and we're focusing in a different direction. So, however and wherever, all right, and to what decimals, all right, we can scream and shout and put the pieces together to put people to work in manufacturing industry right away. It helps businesses thrive, it helps, you know, put people to work, teach them a sense of responsibility and pride and accountability for a product that they're producing and a team that they're working with, they're helping put into the economy, you know, whether it's the businesses or themselves, you know, through our wage tax, through our participation in our schools, start a family, it is endless of opportunities if we continue to concentrate on it. And I'm going to say this here, and I'm going to say it at every public opportunity and hearing that we can get, all right, your Office of Industry Manufacturing needs more resources, because as Councilman Dom says, the measures, all right, are there, the rate of return and the investment is there, and the investment is our kids, the investment is our communities, the investment in is Philadelphians, so.
Well, thank you.
I'm going to continue on with that. I know my buzzer has stopped, and I won't have another round, but, you know, where are we at with manufacturing? Are we getting, collecting good data as a result of our calls? Do we need more people making the calls? Do we have the electronics for our systems to be, to be better kept for record-keeping and how we go communicate when we're manufacturing? I just got off the phone with one on my way in here, and you know what he needs?
People.
He said, I don't know where to call, he needs people.
I know.
All right, and I don't know who to call. I don't know who to call, and I got a city service, I'm not sure I have that kind of continuity and contact that I can call. People are short dumping, I got my employees, all right, that I'm short-staffed, the one cleaning up on weekends, they short dump, what do I do? I said, well, you call my office. All right, so now, I'm going to let them know that I'm asking for him here.
So, one comment about the workforce, and that is, far corner, about three months ago, there was a meeting held with all the CTE schools, many of the trades, many of the administration, and what, one of the things that was most apparent is, all the CTE schools said that they had equipment and teachers ready to prepare young men and women, and we did not have a strong enough pipeline. So, we've got a cultural issue that we've got to re-educate our entire community, that there are living wage, sustainable careers in manufacturing, industry, trades, and tech that right now, that are going unfilled, because we do not have a culture of orientation to follow those pipelines. Right now, we just learned that there's some, a couple of weldings situations around where people were brought in from outside the country to take the jobs, because we cannot fill them here in Philadelphia. And we could recite those stories over and over and over. So, we've got a lot of work to do to get our people to understand that there are 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, $100,000 jobs ready, do not require a four-year college degree, you don't have to go get $50,000 worth of debt, you just have to follow this career path. We all can work together, and we are working aggressively, but it's not, nowhere near fast enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. How are you?
Good evening.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Oh, thank you very much, Council President. I don't really have a question, I just wanted to note that I appreciate the transparency by which your Office has provided information to me as Chair of Global Opportunities regarding what your goals are, what you have done in terms of international business development. It's a welcome change, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Will take all compliments. Thank you very much.
Cheer up while you can, sir. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
So, I don't have any questions either, but I did want to note as well, first, as a former teacher, this Commerce by the Numbers is brilliant, because it really does give us a snapshot, first-hand view of what is and what is not. So, I particularly appreciate the graphics, any kind of graphics, since I'm a visual learner. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you also, and say how much I appreciate your candor that members of your team on what is and what is not. It's just quite refreshing. I want to underscore, put in bold letters with exclamation points, Councilman Green's line of questioning, and I too look forward to the yield or the outcome of the homework you're going to do as you meet with various department heads, and intentionally educate them on what the OEO goals are, and then I too will be curious to learn who ultimately is specifically responsible for the awarding of contracts, because that's always been a blur across departments, and it really becomes confusing once we have developed, when I'm on Rules Committee, and people come before us and they say, well, this was, the decisions were yielded by OEO and a particular department. So, how that process ends up, a number of us will be very curious to learn about.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, if I could, let me just make one comment of learning for the Director of 15 months and the OEO of 67, and that is, we've got some work to do once, as a city, to make sure that once a contractor receives a contract, that he or she or that team is successful in it, and they get paid on time.
Paid on time.
So, there's a lot of work we got to do. So, we may applaud the front end, but we have got major flaws in our system to make sure that they come out of the back end successfully with a contract and stay in business.
Well, the acknowledgement in and of itself speaks volumes, that, because councilmembers across this body have complained about folks not being paid on time, and the bad news that is for emerging and startup businesses. So, for there to be an acknowledgement really is the first step towards fixing, fixing those flaws and tweaks in the system.
I will say, but that's where rebuild provides a significant opportunity, because the size of those contracts provide a great opportunity for a larger portion of them to go to the very vendors we want to support in the neighborhoods in which they reside. But still, we got to make sure that the process through the entire pipeline
Yes.
is one that allows them to come back and get another contract.
That's right. Two more things. As you view the corridors, which I know is an exciting experience, I'm looking forward to doing my part.
We missed you, we missed you the other day.
So, I wasn't informed. What kind of data and information are you gathering so as to have a big picture of what's working, where the needs are, et cetera? I mean, as I listen to Councilman Dom and Councilwoman Parker in Bass all the time on what's happening on the corridors, what type of information are you collecting which then informs what your priorities will be in future years for how we make as many corridors look like certain sections of the city?
So, safe, clean, well, safe, clean, well-lit, and well-managed are criteria for every quarter, doesn't make any difference whether Center City, Organs Avenue, Passyunk Avenue, North Broadway, doesn't matter, safe, clean, well-lit, and invested in, and well-managed are criteria. Now, I think Councilman Dom said a very profound thing of reality. Everybody in here is contributing to the deterioration of quarters, because everybody in here gets some Amazon boxes once to three times a week. In fact, the building I live in used to have a room about the size of this table for its boxes, and had to expand it twice because of the velocity. And every time we do that, we're taking business out of our retail quarters, and it doesn't matter whether it's Broad Street or whether it's the neighborhoods. And so, these things are going to develop at a very different pace with a whole different kind of profile, I think Councilman Dom is right, again, you cannot, you cannot outsource eating. But I also know that there are some very unique kinds of shops that are opening up. I will make a little fun here, I mean, we now have a cat cafe in Philadelphia, all right? And so, there are people making businesses on the quarters in very different and unique ways that we can't even imagine. And what Commerce's job is, is to be there with them at every step of the way
Yes.
to make sure that they are successful, because some of these, we can't even imagine the kind of quarter, the kind of retail outlets that will emerge in the new economy. But again, when they do, they still expect to be in neighborhoods that are safe, clean, and welded.
Finally, on the harsh reality that you and Councilman Heenan have spoken to, is there, could there be a task force with the school district and Commerce and whoever else you think relevant and appropriate to address this culture issue that is real, and how it is not helping us have more than adequate numbers of young people in the pipeline? I mean, if we're ever going to get real serious or more serious with this 25.8 poverty rate, we see some answers in, before us, yet we can't, we can't close the gap because of the lack of the pool.
I am very proud to say that there are more task forces than there are days of the week that we have working on this. I mean, I could, there's a room of, in fact, one of the things I think we said is, we probably need to find the forum to advise council on all the work that is going on in the collaboration between the government, the public sector, the private sector, the nonprofits, in this education workforce. There is more initiatives than we've got time to talk about, but it is a systemic issue that is going to take, well, what I said to, because I co-chair one with Mike DiBerradino, this is generational work, to get people to understand, you have to go get a license certificate or a degree, I didn't say a four-year degree, but some kind of
Piece of paper.
piece of paper to compete in today's world and get one of these jobs. And we've got 67% of our population, one of the lowest, highest levels in the nation that has no certificate, license, or degree beyond high school. We got to change that, and we're not going to do it overnight. Now, the good news is, seven, eight years ago, it was 25% of citizens had a two- or four-year degree, it's now 33. We need to get it to 60.
Got it.
That's not going to happen overnight.
Okay. The gentleman next to you, say now.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. My name is Jonathan Todd, and I'm the Director of Talent Development for the Commerce Department. And just to talk a little bit about the need to cultivate the next generation of workforce that's as diverse as the city that we live in, is talent development, through our travels, came to understand that, and through CTE Month, Manufacturing Week, doing maker convenings around the city, and engaging with the school district, CCP, private and public institutions, et cetera, we have, you know, taken on that task head-on. We were able to engage with over 4,000 parents, students,
Oh, very good.
educational entities, et cetera, just all about early exposure through introductions for middle school and high school students to careers in, career technical education, advanced manufacturing, STEM.
When did that happen?
Pardon?
When did that happen?
Throughout this last fiscal year. So, we had a month full of activities for CTE Month, which was in February, we had a week full of activities for Manufacturing Week, which was in October of 2016, and we're planning consistent programming around early exposure opportunities in the next calendar school year, culminating with a larger presence for Manufacturing Week.
So, do you capture those young people and somehow, some type of way, hold on to them so that they ultimately do land in one of the type of experiences that Councilman Heenan has spoken about?
Yes, ma'am. So, we try to get them to identify a pathway that, you know, engages them and intrigues them, and do whatever we can through events, through initiatives, through programming to make sure that they are exposed to all of the available resources and opportunities to help them further their interests and pursue a career.
One of the other things that we do is, we, through the work of Eloise Jettison and Jonathan Todd, they facilitate our collaboration with all of our third-party partners. And so, we may not connect them directly, but we connect them to many of our partners who will follow them
Okay.
and support them
Okay.
and hold their hand through the various steps of the process.
Very good.
Okay, and there are many numbers of the programs that they kind of track and stay connected to, some will fund, some will support, but we find ways to make sure that young men and women are getting connected to the pathway that's going to get them to whatever their individual pursuits are.
Okay. I thank you all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I will stress that Jonathan and Eloise, and this is a unit that did not exist 18 months ago, so all this is new.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Welcome. Good afternoon, round two, I guess, right? I have a chart that I want to give to you guys, and it's from somebody we both know, which is the Central Philadelphia Development Corporation.
We know this chart very well.
We do. This chart shows the 26 largest cities in the country, and it shows the average annual growth in private wage and salary from 2010 to 2015. And it shows that the range is from 1.1 to 5.2, and Philadelphia and the Philadelphia metro area is at the bottom of the chart, the bottom, which is very disturbing to all of us.
These aren't, this is not salaries, this is jobs.
Private wage and salary jobs.
Right.
Jobs, yeah, jobs.
Yeah.
So, and the Commerce, as Commerce Director, I think one of your, my question to you would be, how do we dramatically reverse this trend over the next 10 years?
So, you and I have had part of this conversation, let me just start off by saying that probably the most discouraging thing on here is it's not only the city, but it's the entire region. And that was my most alarming assessment of this. Number two, if America was serious about its future, it would invest significantly in infrastructure, because it has fallen apart, and that is what we need to substantially increase the safety of the country and jobs immediately. Now, I would say the city, if successful with rebuild, will be one contributor to that. One of the things that's got to happen is, we've got to open up the trades. We've got to. There's way too many of our jobs being done by people who do not live in our city, and that, in my mind, is something that needs to change. We've been talking about it for the last 20 minutes, this workforce development issue is absolutely paramount. We've got thousands of jobs, not hundreds, thousands of jobs right this minute that are unfilled, because we have a skills gap, and that will continue for every day, week, and month that goes into the future. And we got to make sure that we are moving as fast as we can to get Philadelphians ready to take those jobs. In addition to that, I was in a meeting last week with a prominent New York company who was saying, I now understand that I need to seriously look at relocating my offices from New York to Philadelphia, because the gap is wide enough for me to make that a serious proposition. And so, we in Commerce will be taking more aggressive actions to figure out ways to get increasingly proactive to target the advantages that Philadelphia has as it relates to its location, really on the city, that can get to the financial capital and political capital and make it a day trip. The increasing financial advantage of live, work, and play here, New York is pricing itself way out of the market of reality, and the issue of talent are all three significant assets that we have that I think can be major contributors to changing this trajectory. Now, there's an article that came out over the weekend, Pittsburgh and Philadelphia are the only two places in the state that had recent net population gain and net employment gain. Everybody else had negative loss. Why is that? Because the, our generations behind us prefer cities over suburbs. We've got to use that to our advantage. One of our most recent attempts at that was our Gateway Philly Project, where we're doing rent incentive to get doing rent incentive to get suburban companies to move to Philadelphia. So, we've got a lot of projects working to, to, to move this around, but at the center of it is workforce. We gotta get our citizens to understand that dropping out of high school, I was on the L on Saturday, talked to three young men, all looking for a job, told them I'd help them, but also said, "When you come to see me, I gotta show you, you gotta go back to school." At least to graduate from high school.
But here's what I'm looking for, is it, I don't know if it's the Commerce Department, but is there a plan we can put together that shows us over the next 10 years, we're going to go from the bottom to the top, and here's how we get there?
I think it is a, it will be a multi-dimensional plan, but yes, I think that is something that everybody can be working on, and, and, and so, your notion of 100, yeah, I completely subscribe to that.
My next question, right. My next question, but that's okay.
Well, and that just shows you, I, I do listen.
I know, I know.
Can I, I have just one quick thing to add. So, I had a conversation with Washington DC that recently did an economic development plan to just get a sense of what it takes. It's a pretty big endeavor, and there's a few things that we have happening here that we can probably put together to create that plan. So, Planning and Development's working on a community development plan that does include neighborhood revitalization and community economic development. And then, we're talking about doing a workforce development plan, which will be part of it. And then, whatever is sort of missing, which there's business development, other things like that, we can kind of pull it all together. But there is a lot of talk about doing that.
So, so, two, two other comments. And one is, whenever you pick a period of time, you can kind of get the outcome you want. This is 2010 to 2015, right at the height of the recession. So, the good news, bad news is Philadelphia did not go down as far as many other cities, because meds and ads make up a lot of our, you know, workforce, and so, during the recession, we did not go down as far. But if you were to go over a longer period of time, you would see the impact of Rust Belt. And so, if you look at a lot of other of these cities, they are southern cities, sunshine cities, and oh, by the way, the way I say it is, the North won, won the Civil War, but right now, the South is winning the economic war. And so, we've got some other challenges by our location, but, but our differentiation is our talent, our location, our affordability in the northeast quarter.
Well, I'll come back in the next round, but if we could put together a plan that shows us how we can get to the top, I'd love to see that. Thank you.
You and I said we'd work together on this, we work together to do that plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome.
Um, I have a couple of questions here, I'm sorry. Okay, so, I wanted to talk about, Rebuild was mentioned a couple of times, and one of the questions I had about Rebuild was, according to the administration on the website, on the Rebuild website, it says that, oh, we, oh, excuse me, that Commerce is going to do support capacity, support capacity building for minority and women-owned businesses over the life of the program, access to capital, skill building, bonding assistance, and insurance, and insurance. And, and my question was, doesn't Commerce already do this? What, what will we be doing in Rebuild that we aren't already doing?
What, what we've agreed to do with Rebuild is provide a master EOP document that will guide their participation throughout the life of Rebuild. We will also participate on their advisory board-
That's provided to the contractor?
That's going to be provided to the, to Rebuild staff. So, we're, we're going to work together on a master document, which will guide their individual EOPs that will happen throughout the life of Rebuild.
So, basically, what has happened, maybe since that website was done, or maybe it's not uploaded, updated, is Rebuild has the resources within the Rebuild office to do the majority of the activities to deliver the two results. We will provide support to them, but the majority of what Rebuild needs, Rebuild has the capacity to do inside. And I want to go back to what Councilman Heenan said. One of the reasons we did this, because what we want to do is, we want to focus on the private sector, who will spend 10 times the money that Rebuild will spend. And we want to make sure that the opportunities are being provided to minority and women-owned companies while this major transformation and next wave of progress of Philadelphia is taking place. And so, Rebuild has within it the, the bulk of the capacity it needs to deliver the goals and objectives of Rebuild.
Sorry, one more addition to the, to the answer. So, the Commerce Department and the Rebuild team are meeting monthly, we've been doing that for probably about four or five months, and one of the reasons we did that is because the Commerce Department wanted to make sure that none of the work that we currently do becomes, that there's no duplication of what we're already doing, that we leverage what Commerce Department's already doing. So, you're absolutely right, that we do fund a lot of capacity building for small businesses, and we do some in-house as well. And that's what we brought to the table. We said, "This is all the stuff we do, and we want to make sure that we work with you to determine what gaps exist and what can be grown, or, you know, what's really working well that we need more of," and that Rebuild's the opportunity to do that. And the other, so there's the diversity piece through OEO, there's the small business or the business development capacity building piece, and then, there's the talent development piece that we have. And so, in terms of accessing the trades, that's something we've been looking at as well. So, you want to make sure all of that we're working together on.
So, I'm, so then, I'm a little bit confused then, so then, because I, from what I got from the director is that you're basically not providing those services that were listed here, because, because Rebuild has what it needs.
We have provided, we have provided them the counsel on how to do it. So, if you look inside Rebuild, they have the capability to do what they say they're inside of Rebuild. So, we're not going to spend the bulk of our time focused on those initiatives for Rebuild.
So, they, so they already have what they need to provide, access to capital for minority and women-owned businesses, they have the skill building and the bonding assistance and insurance, they're, like, Rebuild is going to have an arm that provides all of that-
Yes, yes.
To, okay, so Commerce is not going to be intricately involved in-
We will be involved, but they, either through their direct or, or their contracting arm, they will do that within that purview, and it will not be the primary work of Commerce to do that.
Okay. All right, so, okay, all right, so I just need to readjust what I'm saying, because I, you know, I give these Rebuild briefings, and I don't want to say something that's not accurate. So, I'll just follow up with you offline, just to make sure that what I'm actually, the information I'm providing is accurate, because I want to make sure that we're doing that. One other question I had that came up earlier is that someone mentioned the difficulty that subs, particularly minority subs, have getting paid from a job that's a city job where they're having difficulty getting paid from the prime contractor. And so, we actually passed a bill, I believe it was, well, yeah, it was last year, that allowed subcontractors to be able to go through PIDC to receive 80%, I believe, of the funds on a city-held contract. They could get 80% of the funds and not have to wait for that, you know, for the full amount. But basically, it seemed as if we were putting people out of business while they were waiting for the city to pay or for the primaries to pay. So, can you give me an idea as to how many of these subcontractors have access funds? Have, is, is that something that Commerce is pushing or talking to vendors about?
So, I'm on the board of PIDC, and I am aware that there is an increasing number of minority women-owned companies that are utilizing the increasing flexibility of, of PIDC programs for financing, but that doesn't mean 100% of them are doing that.
Okay.
And every now and then, we do see a company that finds itself in some shadows of struggle because of conflict and debate between the tier one and tier two.
Okay.
All right? And they have not, one of the other things that will come out of Rebuild and others is, we've got to do more technical assistance and, and, and back in, back office prep support for businesses who are good at the technical side, but not very good at the business management and financial side. And that's, and, and that's what we're finding.
But, but that's just, you're saying that's just Rebuild, though? I'm talking about across the board.
No, 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 I'm, no, I'm saying that Rebuild will provide this increased opportunity to help get our arms around those kinds of companies to support, to, to mitigate those kind of outcomes.
Okay.
But every now and then, we do see a situation where conflict between the prime and the sub, and the sub chose not to, for whatever reason, to go put themselves in-
Sure.
...position with the line of credit-
Right.
...and they find themselves in a difficult position.
Okay. I'll come back around to my second round of questioning, but I would like to get the numbers, if we could provide the information to the, to the, Mr. President, in terms of, you know, how much this program that we developed last year, how, how much is being utilized? If there are kinks in the system, we want to get the kinks out, we want, we want people to be able to use this as a funding source, and so, if, if it's not working, we want to fix it.
Now, I don't want to stress that.
If you could get those numbers to us, that would be great.
As, as Karen Fegley talked about earlier, many times, the issue that we face is small businesses taking advantage of the programs that we do have. So, we need to do continued outreach and education and coaching and technical assistance to have them take advantage of the programs that are available.
If you have a, a list of what other programs that are similar, that people are taking advantage of, you know, we'd like to get that information as well, so that we can get a sense of, again, is, is this effective? Is this the best way to do it? Does it need to be fixed in some sort of way, or are there other more effective programs? So, if we could have a list of all the programs and how people are addressing this issue of not being paid in a timely fashion by their prime contractor, who's not being paid by the City of Philadelphia at one time, if there's a way that we can address all of that at one time, that'd be great. Okay, I'll come back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to continue on a conversation that me and Mr. Epps has probably had over the past maybe three, if not four, years about the city. And you, in your conversation with Councilman Dohm about business that was interested in coming to the City of Philadelphia, I think one of the things that we do not do a, a, a really good job on is marketing the City of Philadelphia. I know I've talked to you, Sylvia, about a, the concept of a business attraction summit or meeting, and I'm understanding that there is a recent meeting, or the meeting may have just occurred, where we bring all of the city agencies or city-related agencies or entities that do any type of business attraction to the city together in one location. I think that's a good step forward, so we can see what, what Visit Philadelphia is doing compared to Select Rated Philadelphia, compared to Commerce Department, and it's good to have them all in the same room to kind of understand and perspective what everyone's doing. But separate and apart from that, there really needs to be, from my perspective, a more unified pitch on how we brand the City of Philadelphia for a business destination and location perspective outside. If you look at Visit Philadelphia, it's been around for now about 21 years, they have a single brand outside the city about what Philadelphia is like to visit from a tourism perspective, going back to, that started coming out of when Governor Rendell was mayor. But we don't have that same consistent message from a business perspective. I get up at a very early hour in the morning, and so, I often see the Andrew Cuomo, "Come to New York" commercials, State of Opportunity, you know, and all these marketing opportunities regarding how you should come to New York City, um, come to New York State, not just the city, but all around that state. Now, granted, we don't have the same level of dollars, but we still need to come with a uniform mission from a perspective and vision for the city. How do we go about doing that? And then, the next question is, how do we come with dollars to do that?
So, the summit that you're talking, actually, the, we're calling it a meeting, but it's going to take place this Thursday on the 11th, that's the first of those, and we're hoping that they'll be quarterly, quarterly or at least biannually. And actually, the, the one that we're having on Thursday is so big, it has to go up to the Planning Commission Room, because there's so many different organizations that want to be part of it. So, we've basically tapped all the different quasi-city, city and nonprofit organizations that work to promote Philadelphia in terms of business attraction, but also, since PHLCV or Visit Philly and PHLCV are not just tourism, they do get involved in also, in attracting entrepreneurs and talent. We're bringing all of those people to the table to look at how they talk about our value proposition and how we promote Philadelphia. We're, we're a different city than we have been, you know, 10, 20 years ago, and we're, we have a more global profile, so we're looking at how we promote ourselves more globally. And we're also applying to Brookings Institution, which has a program called the Global Cities Initiative. And if we get into that, if we are approved, doesn't come with dollars, but we get put into a cluster of cities, global cities, so it could be a combination of internet cities outside the US and within the US, to look at how we position ourselves as part of that cohort. This is actually something that a lot of cities are talking about, and we certainly see the need, just, just as you've brought up, and are, are working to make sure that we're all coordinating, so that's why those meetings will continue to take place, so that when we're promoting, you know, maybe we're using the same collateral, instead of all having our own little pieces of collateral, maybe, you know, we're using the same messaging. So, we definitely think that needs to happen.
Yeah, I just think that we've had so many missed oppo, well, let me step back. From that meeting on Thursday, will there be someone that's going to be collecting information regarding the various entities that are represented, and, one, their source of dollars and what their marketing effort is?
Well, we'll definitely be collecting all the participants, and I don't know if we'll get to the, the number, the dollar amounts in that first meeting, but we will work to get an idea of what people are spending, so that we're being, we're, we're being more effective.
That's something I, I would like to work on with my office, because I think, by just looking at DNC and even NFL draft here, when we have these type of large events, I mean, the DNC was a perfect opportunity, and I talked to various people about this idea. There should have been information in every hotel room in the City of Philadelphia about Navy Yard. And what a great opportunity that is for your business to come back to Philadelphia, not just for the DNC, but come back and think about locating a regional headquarters, a national headquarters, you're trying to grow. I mean, but we lost that opportunity, and because we didn't have that type of collateral that talked about City of Philadelphia, here's the businesses, here's the opportunities, here's our education background, the college universities, the business amenities, and we don't have that, that piece of material that we should be getting out. And I think that's something that's a missed opportunity, that we don't do enough from a branding perspective to tout the benefit of being in the City of Philadelphia, based on the information that, you know, that Commerce Director Epps talked about in Bretman's Town, proximity between New York, DC, cost of living, the micro college universities, diverse neighborhoods and restaurants and all those things. So, I think that's a, a very lost opportunity, and hopefully, we can move forward in that regard. Next piece, I want to touch base, and, you know, the Council President created a special committee on regulatory reform and review, and I wanted, and I asked this question to Ellen and I, and I'm also curious from the Commerce Department perspective, what type of feedback are you getting from businesses that do business in the City of Philadelphia about challenges? Do you have a ongoing mechanism where businesses can meet or talk with people in the Commerce Department on a monthly, quarterly basis about the issues and concerns they have with doing business in the City of Philadelphia? As well as, for those businesses that were thinking about coming here, why they chose not to?
So, so, I have a committee that's called, I call it the BLAG, the Business Legislation Advisory Group. We have quarterly phone calls to talk about legislation that's in the pipeline that relates to, to business, that impacts business. I also send out, when there's legislation that's introduced, I send it out to that group, and that group is actually growing. So, it involves intermediaries and chambers, but also representatives of the business community. And then, in terms of the feedback that we've gotten, I mean, we're certainly hearing that businesses feel that the environment is increasingly more challenging in terms of regulation, and, you know, there's always, there's always concerns around taxes, our tax levels being high. And honestly, another thing that comes up is our, is our school system, the concerns about talent and being able to bring talent to the city when people want to have schools that they believe are excellent for their children. So, that's another challenge that we face in attracting businesses.
And what was the name of that committee that you had?
The Business Legislation Advisory Group.
And Councilman Green, it depends upon the lens you look through. Again, increasingly, I'm talking with people from New York, who will say, you know, the tax rate in Philadelphia is nowhere near New York, the complexity is nowhere near New York, so they see it through one lens. If you are a startup, you look through it through a different lens. If you've not done business here in Philadelphia and you moved from someplace else, you're going to look through it through a different lens. So, we cover the entire gamut, but the reputation that we have is we're complex, bureaucratic, and having served as the Chair of the Tax Task Force in 2009, at that point, and I think it's still true, we had more tax is on the books than any other city that we could find. So, we've got our work cut out for us, but this group that you and I both are on is charged to simplify, streamline, and eliminate, and if we do our jobs correctly, then we can begin to make some progress to making this a better place to do business.
And, and I, and having, you know, been a small business owner and also an attorney representing small businesses, I definitely agree with you from a tax perspective, perspective, as well as from a regulatory perspective, but we have to chew gum and walk at the same time, and so, we're looking to, and we have been making tax reductions in the city, albeit not at the, the pace that others would like, but we have been making those steps, and I think through the special committee, we can make other steps. But at the same point, we, for whatever reason, maybe it's part of our Quaker sensibilities, we don't promote Philadelphia as a location for people to come, for businesses to come in reference to grow. For whatever reason, we don't market and we don't promote Philadelphia. And I think if you look at tourism, that was the same role where we were some 20-some-odd years ago, when, you know, Governor Rendell was mayor, and at that point, many people didn't stay- And at that point, many people didn't stay downtown. For the most part, after five o'clock, people left. Many of my contemporaries who I graduated with, either from high school, University of Virginia, left. Some are in Johannesburg, some are in California, some are in London. Now, when they come back and visit family and friends, they see a totally different city. But part of that goes back to the vision and idea of creating a GPTMC or a Visit Philadelphia to market Philadelphia on a regular basis. I think we have to do the same thing from a business perspective because no matter what lens you're looking at, we have ways to tailor that message in a way to those type of levels of a small entrepreneur, a midsize or a multinational to come to the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Hina.
Thank you, Council President. Let's just comment, I guess, on manufacturing and then I'll go to commercial quarters and a couple other quick issues. I wonder if there's a goal that we can set for the next couple of years about employing Philadelphia into manufacturing, into the sector and how we do it. And let's just say, you know, 50 or 100 new jobs a year for the next five years. Let's just keep it for five, five years. Let's, you know, let's create 250 jobs. Well, actually, jobs are already created. Let's fill 250 jobs. Let's fill 500 jobs, you know, when, again, I just want to emphasize the fact that we're missing opportunities here for real jobs, real sustainable jobs for Philadelphians that in the height of the recession in 2007, eight, nine, right, we couldn't fill 500 jobs in this sector. And some, we would even argue, it was 700 jobs. I don't know that. All right, I just, you know, it's something I've heard over and over again. But anyway, that's just a statement. I'll leave with that. Quick few things, and I know--
Let me just respond to your statement on that. And that is, we do track on a periodic basis, I can't remember whether it's quarterly or monthly, but we do, we do get a report that tells us how many jobs and how many Philadelphians are working. And it does give us by category, by industry category. So we do have the data.
Great. Well, we should, you know--
And again, we sent to this, or I'll give you a copy, I'll just show you the picture. The good news is, again, the numbers are going in the right direction, not fast enough.
Absolutely. Maybe, maybe it's not fast enough by, by design. I mean, the economy's slowly coming back, not by what it, at the rate it normally does. So maybe, you know, the incremental progress is not a bad thing, but--
No, 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 no. Everybody else is outpaced. The reason we can say that is, so far as our job growth goes, we're in the fourth quartile as a city. So in spite of the pace we're growing, everybody else is growing faster than we are.
Oh, well, we got to do something about that then.
Exactly right. We got to go fast.
Yes, we do. All right, place-based incentives. You know, I stepped into the chambers here and we were just finishing a conversation about the in-store program, which I love. I love, love, love it.
Yep.
So let me start with the in-store program. How do we measure it? What's the usage? Is it meeting expectations? And do we need to modify it at all to accept and grow it?
In-store is great. We started in-store, as you all know, as a, as a business attraction tool to our low-income commercial corridors so that they could, we could provide an incentive that can either be used by the, by the property owner or by the incoming business to help with the fit-out costs or equipment costs. And it's geared towards food, retail and creative businesses with sort of an understanding of, as Councilman Dom was saying, the fact that we really need more restaurants--
Exactly.
--on our corridors and grocery stores on our corridors. And that those, both of those business types have really high startup costs with equipment and fit-out.
Especially if they're, you know, a small store on the corridor. It's not like you're getting a chain or, you know, any of the, the national retailers that are coming in. I mean, this is somebody whose life savings, taking a chance, who's, who lives in a neighborhood, who's committing to, you know, to be a part of 85% of our, our small businesses in the city of Philadelphia with, you know, while we're trying to attract a walkable corridor district.
Right. And so, and so the intent is that we're going to fund not just, we don't have enough funds to fund every business, right? So it's not just any business that's, that's coming to the corridor, that's expanding on the corridor, but the type of business that will, by them expanding or by them coming, they will help generate foot traffic that will benefit everyone else. And like you said, those are high-risk businesses and it's, it's nice to give this upfront thing. So the program has been fully subscribed. We're, you know, we're funding as many, I mean, we are spending down each, all the money each year because we actually had more funding the first couple of years because it took us a little bit to get the program up and running. So now we're down to sort of what our CDBG allocation is. I think it's $400,000 a year, so we'll probably do--
Is there an increased interest in it over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Or do you project it great?
Yeah, definitely. As word gets out, more and more people want to take advantage of it. We have, similar with our storefront program, our goal this year is really to make sure we are going above, you know, spending our efforts on targeting the corridors that need it the most, the most low-income corridors.
You know how I feel about that. And that's, you know, the corridors in my district, at least one of them, really takes advantage of it. You know, they had 26 to date. They're, you know, in the process of, I think, maybe 31, 32 in the pipeline. So I'm really--
Yeah, Charles Dale, right. Taconi is a great example of what you can do when you have--
That's right.
--a dedicated corridor manager and some dedicated funding to be able to actually get your businesses sort of involved and onboard.
Credit, credit to your, your staff and, you know, providing the opportunities and educating and really visiting the corridor and making it so. I'm going to get to my, my, what I'm, what I'm trying to come across. All right, so place-based, or place-based, it's something separate. So on the corridors, we have the storefront improvement program. We have the, you know, in-store program, several other incentives. Marketing, all right? So what I'm trying to avoid is unnecessarily entertaining overlays on commercial corridors and districts. And, and I think a way to do that is enforcement with Ellen I. Ellen I was in here earlier, signed controls and some other, you know, street, you know, enforcements, you know, everybody working together. But to avoid some of that, I think we need a robust marketing program on some of our stores. So you don't have six vacancies on Walnut Street, right, which may be a little higher-end retail, right? But in Taconi, they can't afford that. And in Mayfair, they can't afford that. And Richmond Quarter, they can't afford that. But what they could use is the expertise, maybe coming from the Commerce Department or working with the Commerce Department, or maybe having technical support from the Commerce Department in a, a marketing strategy that will help the corridors who are really trying to seed themselves and succeed, succeed moving forward, avoiding some of the, you know, legislative remedies or, at least they think corrective remedies, which, you know, not everybody fully buys into.
Right, right. I appreciate that. I agree. It's a, let's try to do, get what we want there rather than try to create new rules to keep out other people. And so in addition to the enforcement stuff we spoke to earlier, we are trying to be more proactive with marketing and business attraction, which also we've discovered, especially in neighborhoods, involves preparing the real estate. So it's kind of like being business friendly and doing business attraction, but also identifying real estate and making sure it's, it's ready and able to, to, to be rented or be bought. We have a new effort within our Neighborhood Business Services called Neighborhood, Neighborhood Business Attraction Real Estate Development. We say it like we mean it. And, and it's just a tar, it's sort of what we've always been doing, but a much more focused, targeted, proactive effort of working with our corridor managers, working with brokers, working with different resources to do those sort of market analysis. We've got some new data sources within commerce and we're, we're reaching out.
Now, they're, they're available for, for the managers?
Yes, yeah.
Wonderful.
So just one addition, and that is talking about the quarter development, we're going to try something sometime soon. We call it the, I call it the Quarter Speed Dating. That is where there, there are quarters that need businesses and there are other quarters that have businesses that want to expand. So we're trying to introduce them and educate them about the different parts of the city that can take the improvement model and replicate it in other parts of the city, see what we get out of it. We don't know whether we'll be successful, but it doesn't hurt to try.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Couple more questions. We know the economic multiplier of tech jobs is five to one. For every job you create in tech, we create five more jobs. It's the highest of any sector. And I'm thinking about how Pittsburgh wound up with Google, okay? And how it didn't come to Philadelphia. I'm not sure how that happened. I wasn't here then, but that hurts, not having a Google here. But having said that, the Pennsylvania Economy League, I don't know if you saw the report recently that they published on technology, very, very impressive. The report said in the last 13 years in Philadelphia, 25% of all of our jobs created were in the tech space. Pretty powerful. It also said that one-third of the jobs in tech don't need a college degree. One-third. And it also said that the average salary of those jobs is $39,000 higher than other sectors. So when you look at all those statistics and you see we have a very great, you know, tech world in Philadelphia right now and a lot of great things are happening, I know that the mayor and council president are supportive of the tech world, should we be doing more as commerce in that space? And what, what can we do to support you in, in reaching that goal of doing more?
One of the other comments that we're making, commerce is more, bigger, faster, and this is definitely one of those spaces. So if you can talk about the mayor's visit to South by Southwest, we've got a department of one, a person who focuses on tech on an everyday, Archana Sahai. The good news is that we've moved our reputation in the tech space from the fourth quartile to about the middle of the pack. You know, the, the emerging of the second Comcast Tower will have great benefit along with additional tech companies that have chosen Philadelphia for a startup footprint. Yes, we, we can do more. Yes, Archana, I saw her. You want to come and talk about what else we're doing?
So, oh, my name is Archana Sahai. I'm the Director of Entrepreneurial Investment.
Say your name for the record.
Archana Sahai.
Okay.
So, well, I would say in the last two years, what we really did was we doubled down on the startup PHL brand. So that is the brand that we take out to the market to talk about Philadelphia, to pitch Philadelphia. As you well know, the ecosystem here in Philly, the tech ecosystem knows how great Philadelphia is to start and launch a tech business in. It's really taking that energy outside of Philadelphia. So going to New York, going to D.C., going to San Fran to say, hey, the talent is here. We're perfectly situated as not only a national city, a national hub, but a global hub for innovation. So over the last two years, we've seen our, as Director Epps mentioned, in the rankings. So whether it's the U.S. Chamber ranking us as a emerging tech hub, eighth out of 25, ahead of New York City and Pittsburgh and Baltimore, or very recently, we were also listed as an emerging tech hub. We consistently rank in the top 10 for gender equality. The national average is around 20%. Philadelphia comes in at around 30. So all these metrics, to me, show that our pitching Philadelphia, using startup PHL outside of our market is working. We're also looking to partner with our partners here in the city, so PIDC, of course, and then also Charlie Brennan's team. What they're doing with Smart Cities is an extremely important project and one we're hoping to work very closely with them on to brand Philadelphia for the future as an innovation hub.
So let me ask you all on the record--
May I just make one other comment? And that is, this is beyond tech, but I think it pays to the next generation of individuals when the retention rate of our college grads has gone from 22% to--
Oh, it's close to 50%.
Yeah. So I think that just says that younger people, be they in tech or not, are choosing to stay in Philadelphia. And the more they do that, the more we're able to sell the city as a place for the next generation.
Right. I think you're referring to the non-native college graduates was 24% 12 years ago.
That's right.
Today, it's between 48, 50, which is phenomenal.
Exactly.
Same as Boston. I never thought we'd get there, but we did.
Exactly right.
But here's my question, because I view this as an investment. I don't view this as spending money. So my question to, to the Commerce Department is, do you need more monies to invest in this space for us to build more jobs in this space?
If you ask me about any category in commerce about spending, the answer would be yes.
So you need to come--
You could use more money.
So we need more jobs. We need more revenue. You need to tell us what you would do. I'm open to hearing that. I love to hear how, if we invest $5 million more, what kind of return we're going to get on that investment.
We'll take that under advisement. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Council President.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Multitasking. So I had a question for OEO, and it was around something we've talked about before, which is Horizon, which provides the city's prison and health services. And, you know, I was concerned because, and for those who may not be familiar, Horizon was investigated for using a pass-through, I forget how many years ago, but maybe 2012, 2013 or so.
Yes.
They had been using a pass-through for a minority pharmaceutical provider. The minority pharmaceutical provider, once it was found out, was actually disbarred from doing business with the city of Philadelphia. But Horizon was allowed to stay, but under some regulations.
There was a settlement.
There was a settlement. Okay, okay. The technical term--
Financial settlement.
Okay. And in that settlement, signed by Horizon, they would need to notify the city of Philadelphia, basically OEO, if they were going to make any changes to Horizon's use of minority subcontractors.
Correct.
And so if we fast forward, in late 2016, Horizon brought to my attention their interest in doing better, you know, in regard to minority participation. And let me be clear, I'm not making it seem like Horizon is, you know, Boy Scouts. I've had many issues with them over the years. But they did bring to my attention that they were trying to do better and they were trying to work with a minority female-owned businesswoman, African-American-owned business, which happened to be located in my district. As a point of disclosure, I don't know this businessperson. I don't, I don't know this business particularly. But they were trying to move their contract from, from a business that was in another state, I think it was Maryland, and they were trying to move that business or that particular piece of the contract here to Philadelphia to a local, as I said, African-American-owned, African-American woman-owned business--
Right.
--that would be local right here in the city of Philadelphia. And then it was brought to my attention that as they were trying to make that change, they were blocked from making that change--
Mm-hmm.
--by OEO.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and you and I met a couple of months ago and we discussed it. And we were told that the change was not permitted because OEO was not notified in a timely fashion, that that was the reason for the change. So I guess the question that I have here is, if we're, if OEO was responsible, the responsible party for ensuring that there is as much minority participation and opportunity here in the city of Philadelphia as possible, what we've essentially, it sounds like to me, what we've essentially done is block the minority woman-owned business from being able to do business here in the city of Philadelphia where she would have hired locally, paid local taxes, been intricately involved in the business community. And we blocked that, that transaction or that, you know, change in contracts based on the fact that Horizon did not give effective notice in enough time?
So that, that's part of it. So first of all, the, the minority vendor in question was already on the contract and already receiving funds. What Horizon--
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
They were already part of the contract. They were providing, they were providing some other good, I think it was safety products. I can't remember exactly--
So they were providing something to Horizon?
They were already on the contract.
Okay.
So just to clarify, their request, Horizon's request was to arbitrarily dismiss another WBE vendor and increase that particular vendor's percentage of business with three months left in the contract.
Okay.
So there are a few things that our office is bound by. And first of all, treating our vendors consistently is really important.
Okay.
So the vendor in question was a WBE. It was a vendor that was not based in Philadelphia. However-- However, they are due the same level of advocacy that any other business in our directory is due. So they had not, they had been performing fine on the contract. There was no reason to necessarily stop doing business with them. They hadn't provide, you know, they were doing fine on the contract. Likewise, there were three months left on the contract. So there are a number of things that I'm unable to disclose.
Sure.
But essentially, this is how the debarment situation started with Horizon originally. All right? They started, they identified a vendor, they courted that vendor, and so part of our reason for, it wasn't blocking, part of our reason for disallowing the change was because, number one, we had to act in a defensible way. We could not, you know, just say that it was okay to arbitrarily dismiss a vendor in this case, and in many, many other cases that we defend on a daily basis, then say, okay, you don't have to notify us. Those protocols are put in place actually for a reason, and most, and primarily, they are to protect the minority sub, not to protect necessarily the prime. So that was part of, part of the reason. The second part of the reason was there were three months left on the contract, and we met with Inspector General's office, and there were a number of questionable, there were a number of questions as to why the switch needed to be made that late in the contract. We were told that the switch was going to be made so that they could meet their vendor participation goal, when in fact, if the switch was made, they would not have met their participation goal. So because there were three months left in the contract, and because this particular minority sub was aligned with Horizon for the new contract, we felt it best, and we felt it, that our actions were defensible in protecting everybody that was part of that situation in terms of our subcontractors. So yes, we did disallow. We didn't block. We did disallow the switch because Horizon, again, did not follow the protocol that our office requires to make that switch. So I understand, I certainly understand, and you and I talked, your concern, but on the same token, we have to act in a way that's consistent, and we have to treat every vendor, whether it's a WB or a MBE, whether they're Philadelphia-based or whether they're part of the metropolitan area, we have to, we have to advocate for them in the same way. And so that's why that decision was made.
Okay. Well, a couple of things. So the first is that I don't understand the rationale.
Okay.
Because, you know, we in the city of Philadelphia, I just think, this is my opinion, is that we have to advocate for people who are in the city of Philadelphia. I'm not advocating for folks who are in Maryland. You know, listen, God bless them. I wish them well. I don't mean them any harm.
Right.
But they have people in Maryland who are advocating for them. So when we have the Office of OEO that has a responsibility to really fight for Philadelphians to have an opportunity to participate economically in what's happening in their city, I think that that is part of the mission. And if it's not, then we ought to look at what the mission is. If we're advocating for people in California as the same way we're advocating, or actually more than we're advocating for people here who are doing business here in Philadelphia, who are paying local taxes, who are paying really all of our salaries and contributing to the local economy, I just can't understand how it is that we are allowing something like this to occur. And I understand, you know, that there were three months left in the contract, although I don't see the relevance of that. They would be able to switch when the contract was over. Is that correct?
If Horizon is selected for the new contract, which is actually in the process of happening now.
Okay.
They're part of Horizon's team, this particular vendor. So if Horizon is selected, they will be part of the brand-new contract.
Okay.
But that decision has not been made, as far as I know, yet.
Okay. So they would have that opportunity? If they were selected?
That's right.
But I think the third point is that the guidance we got from legal was that the policy, the guideline, the law says that there is a certain place and point and process of notification, which they did not follow. And so if we amended it for them, we would be setting the precedent to amend it for others.
Well, I just want to say, there's no way that I'm, you know, saying that Horizon, like I said, that they're a bunch of Boy Scouts. That's not what I'm saying at all. But what I am saying is that the city of Philadelphia, you know, we made a deal with this devil. Okay? When they messed up the first time, we had every right and opportunity to, you know, find someone else. Because I believe this is the second go-around in terms of rebidding this contract. And what we did is, we barred a minority contractor. We didn't bar Horizon. We barred the minority contractor from doing business with the city of Philadelphia. So there's a whole lot of messiness associated with this whole thing.
Right.
And so, you know, I just don't think that we can sweep all of that under the rug and act as if it didn't happen. You know, Horizon has been not such a great player in all of this, but at the same time, who are we hurting here? We're not hurting the minority businesswoman in Maryland. We're not hurting the, you know, Horizon, which is a national, you know, conglomerate firm, huge. We're hurting a small African-American-owned woman business here in Philadelphia who would pay local taxes and do local hiring. And so for that, I just cannot get beyond the sense of, in my opinion, just a little bit of short-sightedness that I don't think, we're looking at the full picture. I understand what the Law Department is saying, and I think that if there were sanctions that needed to be placed on Horizon for, once again, doing things that they're not supposed to be doing, that's completely appropriate. I think if you're going to, you know, sort of hit them with a hammer, nobody is saying that that's not the appropriate action to take against them. But who we are really hurting here is someone who has an opportunity to grow and hire people who are here in the city of Philadelphia.
A point taken. And like I said, I totally understand where you are coming from. Our office is bound legally to conduct business in a consistent way and to advocate fairly. So, you know, you bring up some really good points that point to potentially the need to revamp or overhaul certain protocols, certain laws, and certain systems. But until that happens, you know, I am bound to be a consistent, fair, and equitable advocate for all of our vendors. And I certainly, being of Philadelphia, being an African-American woman, have every reason to want that particular vendor to have opportunity. But at the same time, leading the Office of Economic Opportunity requires that I look at this situation from a protocol perspective, from a legal perspective, and that's where we landed, based on that, based on that hat that I had to put on.
Okay. I would hope that, in our advocacy work, and I'll just close it with this, I would hope that in our advocacy work, that we're advocating for Philadelphians first and foremost. And I understand that you advocate for all of your vendors. But we cannot just, like, we have to look at the big picture, and we can't be so bureaucratic that we are not looking at who we are helping and who we are hurting in these transactions. And so I really feel like we've just kind of shot ourselves in the foot a little bit. We haven't, we haven't looked out for a local person who can hire locally and pay local taxes. We need tax revenue. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Absolutely. Can I just say, this same protocol has, in multiple instances, in the seven months that I've been on this job, protected more MBEs, minority businesses, more local minority businesses than it has, you know, in your words, kind of harmed. So I think, I just wanted to make that, put that on the record as well.
Okay. I'm not familiar with those, but I'd be happy to know about those as well, so that we can have a more balanced overview of these kinds of situations.
So may I respond to the big picture? And that is, so on our ballot in May will be the notion of best value, which will give procurement and us a much better ability to make procurement decisions that will advantage Philadelphians. Because today, we're driven by lowest price, and often, we're sourcing business outside the city because of absolute lowest price, and we are not able to give a more balanced perspective. So that's one example that we are learning, and we hopefully can respond accordingly.
Well, best value, best value would not affect us.
Would not have got in this situation, but I'm going bigger than that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Today, sometimes minority women-owned and small businesses in Philadelphia are not getting the prime contract where they got outpriced by a penny.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don. Then I have one question after that, and then we can wrap up.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a few comments. Backing up what Councilwoman Bass said about Horizon, isn't this, this is the provider of medical care for the six prisons in Philadelphia, Horizon?
Correct.
And this is when they came to hear us, when they came to our testimony, if I recall, Council President, they said the prison population's reducing 34% from 8,200 to 5,800, but our medical costs are staying the same, because they've negotiated a bulk contract versus an individual contract. So I'm not sure that was best value, by the way. That may have been worse value. That's not your area. I'm just saying, this is what's going on in another department. So if we're having, we're in the middle of a new contract, I don't know who's in charge or whoever's hearing it, but we should be negotiating based on individual people versus a bulk contract when the prison population's reducing.
You would think.
The other question I have for you is, this is a follow-up question, I guess, from Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. She talked about, I guess, poverty. How do you break the poverty cycle? So I'd like your thoughts on, I know the Federal Reserve teaches teachers how to teach financial literacy from kindergarten to 12th grade, because I think a good portion of this, you know, 81% of our kids in public school are in poverty. But teaching financial literacy from kindergarten up to 12th grade probably is the way to break part of that cycle. Do you have any thoughts on that as Commerce Director?
Absolutely. There are, there's a document among many on my desk that talks about the half a dozen most compelling triggers to affect poverty, and financial literacy is one of them. Housing is another, but I still got to go back. Workforce and education is a critical dimension. So we've got initiatives and activities going on in all those dimensions. That's where I go back, is generational work. But I sit on a committee with others, the Managing Director, DeBarry Dennis, our Chief of Staff, among others, the School Principal, the President of Community College, among others, where we've challenged ourselves to work to figure out how to get the poverty rate above, below 20% by 2026. And so basically, that boils down to, we need to chip away to a half to six tenths of a point on an annual basis.
The other program that we've talked about here is the Cristo Rey Program, where the kids work in schools, which is phenomenal. And so I've talked to the public schools about this, and last week, Otis Hackney was going to talk about it. But whatever you could do to help, I think that's a big answer to a lot of our issues, connecting public schools with jobs and where they work in our ninth to 12th grade one day a week in a job. I think it's more valuable than attending school in some cases.
I completely agree. In fact, I would argue that's where our educational system needs to be revamped. But I will quote the principal of the Cristo Rey upon my last visit with Eloise Jettison and others, and Jonathan Todd, and that is, we will definitely need to get more of our employers to the table, because the principal said his problem for expanding was not builders, it wasn't teachers, it wasn't students, it was jobs. And so we've got to get more of our corporate and middle-market companies to know if they really want to help the city, it is to open up its workforce to allow young people to come to work.
But the difference between the Cristo Rey model and doing it in the public schools is the public schools wouldn't require any funding. Cristo Rey's a private school. So, you know, in my real estate, I write a check for $35,000, we have four kids that come in. But in the public schools, you wouldn't have to, because you're already funded. So we could transfer this to the public schools.
Yes, but we just got to find jobs.
Right. But I think there's plenty of jobs. You offer somebody a job for free, they'll take in high school kids all day long. Anyway, I think it's something we should explore. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
I think the education people are taking notes.
Thank you, Councilman. Real quick, I can't remember, you were here testifying some capacity, bottom line. And I asked a question about the employers, the largest employers, the most sustainable employers, and you didn't understand, we had that information at the time. But, and I keep talking about this, I keep talking about this healthcare issue, and I noticed in your response to, I guess it was Councilman Heenan, I think you were talking about, how would you, how do we grow the job opportunities for people? And you didn't mention healthcare. You mentioned manufacturing and some of the other things. So we got from the Department of Labor and Industry, 25 largest employers in the city. Five of them are government, so we eliminate government. So the remaining 20, guess what, 14 of them are.
Healthcare.
Yeah. So this whole notion about us not, and I keep talking about the school district and their curriculum, why are we not focusing on that? You know, we focus on construction and all the other things. We should do that. But this is going to be around, and unfortunately, people will always get sick in these jobs, and we just, I just don't see the emphasis on focusing on those opportunities, both from the private and public sector.
Well, I would not say that we don't focus on it. I would say that sometimes we, because it is so much a part of our infrastructure, we kind of sometimes don't give it its due.
If, as the elected official, if I don't know about it, and I represent a bunch of it, and I don't hear about it, then as far as I'm concerned, we're not focused on it.
That's valid.
If it's a secret, then tell me, you know, if I'm not supposed to know about it.
Hi, Eloise Jettison, Senior Director of Talent Development for Commerce. The healthcare industry is one of our targeted industries also, which is a growing area. And we have concertedly done a lot of work with 1199C and some other training providers around expanding apprenticeship programs for high school students and expanding the opportunities in healthcare and behavioral health technology for our workforce and development. So that's one of the other industries that we are focusing on as a unit in addition to the manufacturing industry.
Can I see something? Some documentation that showed me, because I'm...
Yes, we could provide you with the work that is in the pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs that we're partnering with and know about and connecting and convening with 1199C Training Fund and some other of the school district Philadelphia programs that they're doing in CTE.
Who are you working with in the school district?
The CTE, Career and Technical.
As part of the CTE?
Yes, Department, yes. Michelle Armstrong and her team.
So I need to see that program, the document, and I need to see the results. And I'd like to know who you're dealing with in the industry, i.e. the healthcare facilities, because this is where the jobs are, for the foreseeable future. You know, I know we focus on all this other stuff, but...
Yes, it'd be the school district.
I keep talking about, you know, the doctors make a lot of money, and nurses, the registered nurses make a lot of money, but you add all those salaries up, and they do not add up to a single pill, right? Cost you $400. I mean, there's a whole lot of other jobs that are causing that pill to cost you $400. So can you please give me some documentation?
Yes.
On that issue, and our ability, and our strategy, and all the people that you work with in those different industries?
Sure, no problem.
Be very helpful to me.
Council President, I remember when you asked that question, and I've talked to Janay, and we provided some statistics based on what low-skilled or folks that don't have degrees.
Entry level.
And some pathways to get in, for those folks that really just don't, you know, are at low literacy levels, low math levels, there are even pathways for them in that area. But I'm very happy to work with your office, and Philadelphia Works is ready to provide data as well, so we can sort of get together and figure out what it is. And we're happy to provide you with that.
It's like, you know, you're on 34th Street, and it's like a city.
Right.
It's like, what the hell?
The last time I talked to somebody, yeah, the last time I talked with somebody at University Penn, they said they had a couple hundred jobs that they could not fill.
All right, well...
There is one excellent program I just heard about. Einstein has a really great apprenticeship program. They're working with Youth Build and a couple other schools, and they're providing apprentices and then full-time jobs for the youth. So that's a good model.
All right. I just, you know, I'd rather devote some of my time and support revenues for those type of jobs, because they're going to be here, and they're only going to grow. And I'm just, I'm not seeing the school district, and I'm banging Dr. Height on over the head all the time about the emphasis on that. Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. See you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. There being no additional questions. Committee will stand at recess until Tuesday, May 9, 2017, 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you very much.